Everyone, I am going to call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on February 8th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knudsen, he is answering, he'll be in here shortly.
Okay.
Gross. Winn?
Aye.
Dodd?
Present.
Goodrich?
Here. Yeah, I don't know why I said that.
That's all right, force of habit. All council members except Councilmember Gross are with us this evening, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff members in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Winn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Onto item number four. It is my pleasure to be able to present the Volunteer Coach of the Year Awards this evening. This award recognizes coaches who go above and beyond in their volunteer work that they do with the sports programs through the Parks and Recreation Department. And I just have to say that as a parent of five kids, I've had a lot of children participate in these programs. The volunteer coaches make such a difference in our community, and we really appreciate their work. To be selected for this award, the coaches are nominated by a parent, a coach, or a Coralville staff member. The award recipients are selected based on nominations, number of sports programs that they coach, and letters of support submitted by participants and the parents or guardians who participate in the program. So we'll have two awards to present this evening. I'll turn it over to our Parks and Rec Director, Sherri Proud, to tell us about each one of these recipients, and then I will present each recipient with a plaque from the city. Sherri?
Thank you, Mayor Foster. Our first recipient is Jeff Knight. Jeff has been coaching area youth in the Coralville North Liberty and Iowa City Rec programs for the last 13 years. During that time, Jeff has coached football, basketball, softball, baseball, and volleyball. Jeff and his wife Summer have lived in this area for 24 years and have four children ages nine to 18 that all have participated in recreational sports. Jeff is employed by GDIT and works as a project manager for the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Federal Student Aid. Jeff was nominated by Brianna Locker, who wrote, "I would like to nominate my son's Supreme Flag Football Coach, Jeff Knight, with the Saints grades three and four. My son Luke had never played football before starting this program. When he met Coach Knight, he immediately felt very comfortable and at ease when learning the drills. Coach Knight was very patient, kind, and wonderful to work with. He was very communicative to all of the parents, letting us know everything prior to games and practices." And that's a super great thing to have in a coach. "And he showed up early before games to get the kiddos ready. He encouraged the kids to even try every position and praised them for doing well and for trying. I hope next year we get him again. Thank you." And Jeff is here with his family this evening. I'll tell a little bit about the second person, and then we'll send them up to receive their plaques. Our second coach is Dan Wallers. Dan and his wife Carrie have lived in Coralville for 21 years. They have two boys. Aiden is a sophomore at West High, and Lucas is a sixth grader at Coralville Central. Dan has coached over 30 seasons of youth sports, including T-ball, spring and fall baseball, flag football, and basketball. The thing Dan likes most about coaching sports is seeing the kids learn to excel in stressful and challenging situations. He also enjoys watching the kids have fun with their peers and learning to work as a team. Dan was nominated by Jeff and Angela Harney, who wrote, "They would like to nominate Dan Wallers for Coach of the Year." He's been a volunteer baseball coach for a number of years in NLCBS. Our son Gabe Harney has been coached by Dan on multiple teams throughout the years, and we could not be happier than to have Dan as his coach. Dan's approach of team-first fundamentals and sportsmanship exemplify what is best about sport. The teams coached by Dan conduct themselves in best way in both play and sportsmanship. They support each other in victory and defeat regardless of how difficult it may be. The reason they do so is how Dan coaches the team. Dan's all about doing things right and not just to win. For us personally, Gabe was not interested in baseball until this past summer, when Coach Dan demonstrated his belief in him. Gabe went in, went from being a timid player to one who had confidence enough to take the mound in most challenging situations. This was because he knew Coach Dan and his team supported him no matter the outcome. Without a doubt, Coach Dan's work with Gabe helped him immensely as a player, and most importantly, as a young boy. We are truly blessed to have had Dan coach our son. Both of them exemplify what we would like to see in our coaching staff, our volunteer coaching staff with the Coralville Parks and Rec. And I want to just say thank you to Jordan Blile and to Eric Dineson, our athletic supervisor and coordinator, who manage all of these programs, do a great job day in and day out, working with just hundreds and hundreds of parents and children and coaches, and brought forth this award. This is our third year of doing this award, and we're so very glad to be able to present it. So if we could have Dan and Jeff go on up to in front of the dais, we'll have Mayor Foster present those plaques, and we'll get some pictures. And we'll have, you get in the picture, too.
All right. Get those to you that way. All right, congratulations to both of you. All right, ready? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Got it. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, those were just amazing testimonials. Really fun to hear that, and just thank you so much for your service to our community and the youth of our community. Okay. Onto item number five. I have a proclamation stating that February 22nd, 2022, is Wrestling Appreciation Day in Coralville. I will now read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Coralville is the premier destination for all forms of competitive wrestling in the United States, for athletes and spectators alike, and whereas the University of Iowa's athletic programs are an important component of the city's civic pride and can spark positive opportunities for shared town-and-gown community building, and whereas the university's wrestling team has had an extraordinarily positive impact on the community, earning 24 NCAA national championships, and six national runners-up, and 85 individual national champions, and whereas the university is the first Power Five Conference school to form a women's wrestling program, further establishing our community as a place of equal opportunity, and whereas the greater community has supported major wrestling events, including but not limited to the 2012 U.S. Olympic Wrestling Trials, the Grapple on the Gridiron in 2015, which attracted a world record crowd of 42,287 fans in Kinnick Stadium, the 2016 U.S. Olympic Trials, the 2018 UWW Freestyle World Cup, and at Extreme Arena in Coralville, the 2021 and 2022 Iowa Girls High School State Wrestling Tournament, and the upcoming 2022 UWW Freestyle World Cup in December of 2022, which for the first time will include men and women competing on the same stage, and whereas the greater community is unofficially the world record holder for the loudest simultaneous exclamation of the word "two" when a wrestler earns a two-point takedown inside Carver Hawkeye Arena, therefore making this day the most appropriate day possible for an official proclamation. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of Coralville, do proclaim 2:22 PM on February 22nd, 2022, as Wrestling Appreciation Day in Coralville. Signed on this eighth day of February, Megan Foster, Mayor. And we do not have anyone with us this evening to accept the proclamation, but we will make sure that we get it sent to the appropriate parties. There you go. Thank you very much. Okay. Item number six, community comments. So this is the time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust the comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker may need. So if there is anyone in the audience that would like to come and speak to us, now is the time. Yes, come on up. Make sure that you sign in. Share your name with us.
Do you mind if I remove my mask?
Sure, that's fine for the comment time. Yep.
Hi, my name is Shirley Alton-Hofen. My address is 975 No. 1, Applewood Court in Coralville. I'm president of Applewood Court Homeowners Association, and which is located between the newer Coral Ridge Apartments and Northwest Junior High and Kirkwood Elementary. We have a problem that's increasing every year, and we're here to ask for your help. The managers of Coral Ridge Apartments, our neighbors to the west, will join with us. They were not able to be here tonight, since they're experiencing the same problem. Turkey vultures have been taking over the area in the trees on both sides of Applewood and on our rooftops. They're not only a nuisance, but are posing a health threat and are damaging our roofing. They are growing in number each year, and their increasing waste, which carries E. coli and salmonella among other things, clogs our gutters and downspouts. And our residents who live next to the tree line are unable to use their patios because of the disgusting smell and mess. School kids from both schools also frequently use the area as a shortcut to and from school, and are probably tracking the bacteria from that area into both their homes and schools. We have tried to take care of the problem ourselves. We used suggestions found online, banging pots, hitting the eaves with a broom, attaching shiny Mylar balloons, and even blowing an air horn daily. We looked into attaching bird deterrent metal spikes on our roof caps, but besides being cost prohibitive, we noticed that the vultures were also roosting on the sloped flat areas of the roof, so that wouldn't work either. Since turkey vultures are protected, we called the DNR, who referred us to the USDA. They said tactics that work usually are killing a few birds from that same flock, wiring them into cages, and hanging them high into the trees where they roost at night, or spraying them several days in a row with fire hoses, or shooting very loud fireworks near them, or annoying them at night with laser lights. Did I mention it's illegal to shoot or harass these birds? It's also a problem discharging weapons, especially near the school. So it is obvious that we need city approval and involvement here. It would need -- we need approval to use fire trucks and firemen if we're going to be using a water spray. We'd have to have noise approval for fireworks use. We'd have to have approval of firearms, you know, near the schools in order to shoot some. And basically, the trees that they're roosting in, which is right next to our property, the trees do not belong to Applewood. I'm not sure if they're city-owned or if they're owned by the school. Is it city? Okay, so we really, it's not our area to really do anything to without your help. The flock is growing every year, and we've lived with the increasing mess, but it has gone way beyond just being a nuisance. We're seeing our yards covered with feathers, and our windows, siding, and patios filthy from their droppings, and basically unusable from the stench. This problem is causing real damage also, and we have exhausted our capabilities. Our shingles now have to be repaired, and we have also found that vultures not only enjoy eating carrion, they have now developed a taste for the sealant that goes around the pipes on our roof. So according to the USDA, to be successful in moving the vultures, remediation must begin as soon as they show up in the spring. And we've been told by the USDA that for Coralville, this means probably in March. The vultures that scout for good roosting spots need to be discouraged before the rest show up. For this reason, we really hope you will consider our request, and please, get rid of these disgusting birds for us. We've tried everything. Nothing that we've done has worked. Thank you so much for all you guys do for the council, for the city of Coralville, and for all of us. You make Coralville a great place to live. I want to thank you for your time and attention, and we look forward to your response. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us this evening? Okay, thank you very much. All right. Item number seven, fiscal year 2023 budget, public hearings. We have a few items that have to do with our budget this evening. The first is a public hearing on the total maximum property tax dollars for FY 2023. This is a new step that, or a relatively new step, rather, within the last couple of years, that is an additional step in the process created by legislation passed during the 2019 legislative session. So I will now open the public hearing. Do we have any comments on this item? Do we have any written comments?
No.
All right, I will now close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the total maximum property dollars for the fiscal year 2023. Introduced by Councilmember Knudsen, seconded by?
Seconded. Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this item? Comments? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Dodd?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. All ayes with Gross absent. Item, item B. Oh, we already did that, I'm sorry. I lost my place on here. Item C, the fiscal year 2023 budget presentation. All right, this is the moment we have all been waiting for. I am going to turn it over to our Director of Finance, Tony Roltland, and he will share this information with us.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I have a number of slides to go through here. We'll also be posting them on the website. There's a little bit of information in, at the end of this presentation that talks about other resources. So if there's something you have that you see here that you want to learn more about, there's some ways you can find out about it. So a few highlights, goals, and challenges with regard to the FY 23 budget. The proposed property tax rate of $14.3123 per thousand of taxable value is the same as last year. The city's tax rate was the same for 10 consecutive years, a little at the 13.5277 rate. This would be the third year at that $14.3123 rate. We are proposing a water user rate increase and a solid waste user rate increase, and there will be more about that on a future slide. So the chief goals in the budget are to pass a balanced budget, maintain the property tax when at all possible, maintain sufficient fund balances in all the funds, and provide high-quality public services to our citizens and businesses. The challenges, as always, are generally rising costs, planning for future needs, that's an important part of what we do in this process, and then for FY 21, 22, and 23, the financial and planning impacts or outcroppings of the COVID pandemic. In 23's budget, I think we can safely say that as long as nothing changes, there are lesser impacts, but they are there. A little bit about property taxation in Iowa. Property is categorized into classes, each with varying taxing procedures. So residential, multi-residential was new in FY 17, commercial, industrial, utilities, and ag. Cities don't usually have a lot of agricultural land. Coralville has just a little bit. There are growth limitations in the taxable value of each class to reduce dramatic tax shifts between the classes, and the reductions are accomplished through a limitation called a rollback. So this is the rollback and its change in FY 23 versus 22. So you can see the residential class went down 2.2792, and this is, keep in mind, these are the numbers in each of these columns that are the percentage of the assessed value that is taxed. So one mathematical oddity of a change in a percentage is that the 2.28% decrease in the residential, for instance, is about a 4% decrease in that number, when you think about it, because it's about half of 100. So keep that in mind as well. Multi-residential went down per a schedule of reductions until it meets the residential, which is the row above, and then it'll be the same. And then commercial and industrial stayed the same. Ag changed, but again, not much of Coralville is in the ag sector. Here's a chart over time since FY 92 of the rollback. So you can see residential in blue. It's fallen generally, but it rose a little bit in the past decade or so, but it's fallen from about 80% since that time to where it is now. And then commercial industrial is that rust-brown colored line at the top. Ag is the green, and then multi-residential is the short black line that just goes diagonally down since FY 17. So a residential property assessed at 100,000 in Coralville, not that that's the average, but that's a handy, easily multiplied figure. That taxable value due to that residential rollback decrease decreases in the coming fiscal year by $944. So with the same tax rate, that taxpayer pays, all things equal, ignoring the rest of their tax bill that goes to other jurisdictions, $32.62 less over the course of the fiscal year than in FY 22, the current fiscal year. Since the commercial and industrial rollback stayed the same as they normally do, the tax rate staying the same, the property tax payment of a taxpayer would stay the same. So the commercial property tax reform legislation of 2013, so that's almost a decade ago now, so why talk about it, right? The short version of this slide is that the state made up the difference for local governments due to a reduction in the rollback for commercial and industrial properties. That's part A. Part B is the state giveth, the state taketh away. They passed legislation to phase out the backfill payments to local governments. That's about $1,483,000 for Coralville in the current fiscal year. It'll be phased out in FY 23 to 29. It is dispersed, that $1,483 is divided among several funds at the city, and so it comes out of the general fund, the debt service fund, and the TIF funds in FY 22, in FY 23 and beyond. It's simply the general fund and the debt service fund. The city tax levy has several components, the general, the tort or insurance, a transit levy, the trust and agency, and debt service levies. If you add all of those together, except for the debt service levy, you have operating, what I call operating levies, and a debt service levy. So this compares the '23 proposal to the FY 22 actual, so you see no change in proposed property tax rates for debt or operations. This slide takes the total property tax bill for a typical Coralville resident, and there's two school districts that serve Coralville, so I arbitrarily chose a resident that lives in the Iowa City Community School District. But it shows the tax rates and uses the proposed city of Coralville, FY 23, which is the same as our current '22 rate, and just assumes the same rates for others going forward on that tax bill, which is our best estimation at this time. And so that $14.31, basically, is for the city of Coralville, is out of a total property tax rate of almost $37. And if you look at that a different way, it's about 39% of the tax bill. The Iowa City Schools and Johnson County represent the other larger pieces of that, which is typical for cities in Iowa. We just went through the maximum levy notice and hearing process. One thing to keep in mind is that that hearing notice and it's governed by state law and regulations, what is on there. It does show some things, and it does not show some things. Don't take away from that that the total tax rate will be what it says on there. It excludes some levies. For us, that basically means the debt levy. So it talks about the operating levies and the tax rate for those. In the general fund, which is the city's chief operating funds, the revenue sources are taxes, both property tax and hotel motel mainly, licenses and permits, like building permits and rental housing inspection permits, and use of money in property. So that's interest in rental income, intergovernmental revenues, grants and contracts between Coralville and other local governments, charges for services like rec programs, and then transfers and borrowings and other sources. So the estimated revenue in the FY 23 budget proposal is approximately 29.5 million. That's about a 5.5% increase from the current year's general fund revenue. So that supports the areas and departments that I've listed here, you know, public safety, so fire, police, health, social services, culture and recreation, so the library, the rec department, parks department, community and economic development, and then general governmental functions like clerk and finance, legal, costs, administration, and contingencies. So we boil down the revenues on this slide, and then we'll take a look at expenditures in the general fund on the next. But this gives you a sort of scale of how much comes from which sources in the current and prior year, I'm sorry, the FY 23 and FY 22 budgets on the revenue side of the general fund. So you can see most of it comes in the way of property taxes and excise taxes. And hotel motel tax is about the fourth row, 9%, down from about 11.5% a few years ago before COVID, but rebounding, you know, it's on its way back, it seems. And then on the departmental expenditure side of the proposal for the general fund, you see park and rec and public safety near the top, which I suspect is no surprise to the council and staff and mayor. And then library and contingencies, transfers and other. It's relatively high up in the list, but it's an aggregation of a lot of different things. We also have a couple of special revenue funds. The the most prominent one is probably the road use tax fund, or the streets department is another name for it. So state road use tax is allocated to cities by the state of Iowa based on the la- latest official census. The twenty twenty census count was twenty-two thousand three hundred and eighteen, up eighteen percent from the twenty-ten figure. The DOT publishes projected dollars per capita for cities to use in budgeting of road use tax distributions. So a hundred and twenty-six and a half dollars per capita is their official projecting projection for FY twenty-three. So we're expecting two point, a little over two point eight million in road use taxes. So then, and we have some other, at the top of this, you'll see some other revenues and and equipment reserves usage make up the resources side of our proposed streets fund budget this year of three point six four eight million. And then the expenditures are shown at the bottom. So most of it goes to roadway maintenance projects and general maintenance. And then we have snow, traffic safety, street lighting, engineering, and cleaning. And then other is again an amalgamation of a few categories there. We have several enterprise funds at the city of Correville. Public transit, parking, stormwater, and wastewater are four, where there's no proposed user rate change for the upcoming budget year. But we do have a proposed increase in user rates for water and solid waste. So the water rate increase is summarized here. We have residential and commercial rates, and we have a a monthly minimum regardless of of usage. And then an additional amount for amounts above two hundred cubic feet. And so you see those outlined here. This is the first of several anticipated increases for water to add capacity, make sure we can meet demand. Solid waste is another area where we're looking at a proposed increase. So that increase is to fund operating costs and compensate for lower values for recyclable materials. Again, it's the first of a few increases that we anticipate having to make in solid waste. And the challenging, I would say, the challenging areas in the budget, both with regard to FY twenty-three and and maybe for a couple of years thereafter, are that I would highlight in this presentation are for solid waste and public transit. So with solid waste, we're facing generally costs increase over time. And we last addressed user fees, and by addressed, I mean increased them. We always look at them each budget cycle. But we last increased them in twenty sixteen. We have increasing costs from the recycling drop site, and we have rec- recyclable materials values fluctuating. They seem to fluctuate down more often than up over the years. We, there are materials that we're having to pay to get rid of now, just to have them removed, whereas we used to actually receive checks for some of them. And then in public transit, we have declining ridership, which means lower fares, lower fare revenue, excuse me. We have increases in the costs of the paratransit service. The one-time federal funding is projected to last through FY twenty-four. Most of that is is tied to the COVID situation. So we expect that to last through FY twenty-four, which is really, you know, it sounds further away than it is. It's really the next budget after the one we're working on right now. There's some things the proposed FY twenty-three budget includes. It includes a lot of things, but these are maybe some notable ones. Replacement of a paratransit bus, fire protection equipment, station furnishings, street repairs, patching and sealing. Solid waste is replacing a garbage truck. And in the library, we've got AV equipment in the children's storytime room and public laptops and teen area furniture replacement. So in the way of an overview of the enterprise funds, they're listed on this slide, and we show sources and uses of funds. And then timing and additional information. So the Connection Magazine, I got mine in my mailbox today. So that is arriving in mailboxes this week. And it's also available online, correville.org/connection. At the February twenty-second meeting, we'll hold a public hearing on the overall budget. We would anticipate at the March eighth meeting, the city council will consider adopting the bu- the budget. And it'll be filed with the Johnson County Auditor and the state prior to March thirty-first and be effective July first, twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-three. And then I I list several places you can get, and the public can also get additional information on the budget proposal down below. And I would ask if if there are any questions or additional discussion the council and mayor would like to have.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to see us go back to the hotel again. What kind of fund was that coming out of? That's a, that's a big dollar amount there.
Yeah, that's the, it it's its own enterprise fund.
And that's by our choice.
That it is its own enterprise fund?
Yeah.
Yes, although it fits all the normal characteristics of an enterprise fund. It's a business-type activity.
So you say sources of funds and uses of funds in this.
So one thing, one thing you'll notice.
Thousand-dollar difference there.
Yeah, you'll notice that the sources is lower than the uses. And that is sort of a byproduct of COVID and recovery out of COVID. This is an improvement over FY twenty-two and FY twenty-one. So we're sort of making our way back, would be a very informal way to put it.
So that's coming from the the general fund, then?
Well.
That that difference or not?
Effectively, because we use fund accounting in governments, right? It's sort of like you're running a negative in a fund, and you can do that. Now, effectively, the cash has to come from somewhere. So yes, it it's facilitated. For instance, in the audit, it's facilitated by an interfund loan from the general fund. And eventually, if it never did recover, we would have to find a funding source for that difference. And it, one possibility would be the general fund. We are, you know, as we look at projections, we anticipate that the Hotel and Conference Center Enterprise will recover. But yes, it's it's difficult.
Okay.
And then, just to clarify, so like when Mike asked if the the hotel motel piece of it being an enterprise fund was a choice, and part of the reason why our, what those funds can be used for are things like our parks and rec programming. We do use some of that hotel motel revenue to 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 fund some of the the essential businesses of the business of the city.
We do use hotel motel tax revenue for a lot of things in the general fund, some of which you mentioned just now. Keep in mind that this is the Hyatt Hotel, formerly Marriott, now Hyatt Hotel and Conference Center Enterprise Fund, which is separate from that. But yes, the same thing, COVID, that had a downward impact on this enterprise fund had a downward impact on hotel motel tax revenues coming into the general fund for a time.
Other questions?
Yeah, Tony, can you please explain rollback so that the general public have a better idea of what that means?
Yeah, yes. So the basic premise is that if your house, let's say your house has a an assessed value of a hundred thousand, just to use a a nice round number. The state says before a local government tax rate is applied to that house to generate a tax bill, they roll it back to a lower number, which may sound a little bit arbitrary, but that's how they do it, and there are some reasons why they they started that very long ago. Most of them have to do with keeping tax bills that people pay from going up too quickly back at a time when the farm economy was also having issues. So at any rate, on this chart, you'll see that in the current fiscal year, the rollback for residential is fifty-six point four oh nine four. So if your house is assessed at a hundred thousand, the taxable value, the portion which is taxable, is fifty-six thousand four hundred and nine dollars. So fifty-six four oh nine times the tax rate that we talked about of, for the city, of fourteen point three one two three is is how the the tax bill is generated for the Correville portion. And then, of course, the different local governments, their tax rates get added to. But and and the reason it's different by by property type is, or property category, is that the the legislature and the powers that be decided that different types of property should be taxed at different levels. Is that helpful?
Yes, yes. And you also said that the multi-resident tax rate is going to drop until it meet with the residential? Is is that part of the state legislative that?
Yeah, when this, when the state create, when the legislature created that category for property, they, it it was at a hundred percent, so it wasn't rolled back at all. And then they said, okay, well, we're going to establish a set decrease each year until a certain year where it just becomes the residential rollback that's applied to that category. And so it's well on its way, as you can see, from a hundred to a little under sixty-four. So I think we have one more year, and then it will just be the, whatever the residential rollback is in that tax year.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tony?
I'll just, I think you forgot one highlight for the budget. We also, I think, discussed a detective who's going to specialize in IT, whatever you call it. And I assume that's still part of the new budget or not?
It is, in the proposal, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good. Just want to emphasize that, because that wasn't on your list of highlights.
You're right, it wasn't. I apologize.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much, and we appreciate all of your work. It's a lot, and we appreciate the work of all of the department heads as well, who who spend their time putting these things together and keeping our city, keeping our city going. Thank you. All right. Onto item number D. So we will consider a resolution setting the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. And we will have that public hearing on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Don, the resolution?
Resolution setting a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, introduced by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any other final discussion? Roll call, please.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with gross absent. Item number eight is a public hearing on bonds. So this item will, is a refinancing of nine bond issues for interest rate savings. So these are not new borrowings. These are just refinancing and some restructuring to get get those savings. The repayment source will be the city's debt service property tax levy, Oakdale TIF, Twelfth Avenue TIF, and the mall and Highway Six TIF. So I will now open the public hearing. Does anyone have any comments on this item? Are there any written comments?
No written.
All right, I will now close the public hearing, and we'll consider the resolution.
Resolution determining to proceed with the entering into one or more general obligation, essential corporate purpose loan agreements, and taking additional action thereon, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Nguyen. Any discussion or questions on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Resolution is approved all ayes with gross absent. Item number nine, North Liberty Road and Forever Green Road Roundabout. This is for constructing a roundabout at the intersection of North Liberty Road and Forever Green Road. The public hearing for this item will be on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. The resolution, please.
Resolution setting a public hearing on the plan, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract, and directing published notices of the same, both for the North Liberty Road and Forever Green Road Roundabout, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Nguyen. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Um, yes, Mayor, we'd like to leave this on the agenda for the next council meeting, but the city engineer, city attorney, and I are working with the developer to see if there is another way to do the project other than the city bidding it. Originally, it was anticipated that the developer would build it, and we would contribute to them. There was an issue with the way the law was changed on the bidding process. So we had a discussion with the developer today and are looking at another couple of options of how to do it. And we'll have a report at the next meeting, but we'd like to leave this item on until we determine a hundred percent that we can do it in a different way.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, you got a ballpark estimate of of what this would cost?
Not yet. That's one of the things that we're waiting for from the developer, because they're the ones that are putting together the cost estimate.
Does the DOT have anything to do with this at all?
No.
No, okay.
All right, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved all ayes with gross absent. Item number ten is a item on a union contract. This is an agreement for three years, which will run through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And we have our HR director, Mike Funky, here to share some information with us on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We had a very quick and efficient union meeting. In fact, it'll probably take me longer to explain it to you than we actually negotiated. That's how well it went, and I want to thank the Public Works Group for making it easy and and agreeable. The only thing we discussed was the salary increases. And as you said, it's a three-year agreement, three percent the first year, three and a quarter the second year, and three percent the third year across-the-board increases. We also looked at where we were sitting with our water and wastewater operator salaries, and we felt like we were not as competitive as we like to be. So we put in a new pay plan for those folks as well. So we'll be increasing the starting pay, increasing the ending pay. So, we'll be increasing the starting pay, increasing the ending pay, and some steps in between.
Fantastic. All right, thank you. Don, the resolution, please.
Resolution approving an agreement with AFSCME Local One Eight Three, Council Sixty-One, representing Public Works, Parks, and Recreation Employees effective July first, 2022 through June thirtieth, 2025, introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion? I like hearing that things went smoothly. It's always nice when it goes well.
Things are good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I like hearing three percent.
Yeah.
And that's within the budget that Tony just presented, so we're well within that.
Fantastic. Any other questions or comments on this item? Roll call, please.
Council member Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved all ayes with gross absent. Item number eleven is, we have some items that have to do with our Veterans Memorial. We have Parks and Rec Director Sherri Proud to share some information with us on this item.
Yes, and I want to bear with me just one moment. I want to pull a couple of photos so that those viewing at home can see what these pertain to. There's our first one, and... Okay, I might not be able to put my hands on my second one as easily as I thought. Let me move this. Nope, that's not going to be it. Cancel.
There's pictures in the agenda packet.
Yeah, I wanted, yes, there are, and I wanted to show that picture. Oh, here we go. All right. There you go. Okay, thank you. All right, the Veterans Memorial in Corleville Committee continues to raise money and work towards finishing the Veterans Memorial. At this time, I think I've, just take a moment to report for everyone viewing at home. The committee has raised the funds and/or worked with local contractors to put in all of the foundations at the memorial. This is located at the corner of Russell Slay Boulevard and First Avenue at Oak Hill Cemetery. It's, the foundations are in, the plaza spaces are in with the bricks that have been purchased to honor a veteran. They're already in place, the front wall has already been built, and all of the landscaping has been installed in the flagpole. So, that's where we're at right now. And some good news, they're ready to move forward with some additional purchases. And so, these are agreements that basically put the project management in the city's hands, and they will then donate those funds over to the city, and we will procure, install, and make sure everything is put in correctly there at the Veterans Memorial. So, the first one is for this front sign, and this is, it's a curved wall, so it's a little bit hard to get a feel for what this is. But if you've been by and you look at the Oak Hill Cemetery sign, this picks up some of those images from the Oak Hill Cemetery sign so that we're carrying that across the front of the Oak Hill Cemetery and then into the Fire Memorial, picking up some of the same font styles and the use of the aluminum and the black lettering. So, that carries across there. This is a frontlit sign instead of a backlit sign is one of the differences, and then this will wrap around that front. This actually is being sponsored by a donation from one family here in Corleville. Richard and Ann Burton have selected to sponsor and pay for this sign to be installed, and Richard is a veteran himself. So, very, we're very happy to have them included in this, in this project. And then the second project that we have going on is the... They are ready to make the purchase of the granite slabs. So, the purchase agreement that is in your packet is for the purchase of all six of the granite. It is US-made, sourced, and will be brought then and stored at Country Landscapes in North Liberty. And they will, and this purchase agreement is, also starts with the carving, I guess is the right word, engraving of the first medallion. So, that will be done, and they will continue to raise money with the hopes that by June eleventh, the other five will be able to be, have, be able to have that contract in hand. This covers, this purchase agreement covers the city's ability to go ahead and contract for that work as well. And the total goal here is to be ready by November eleventh of 2022 to have a ribbon cutting and celebration for the finish of the Veterans Memorial.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for that overview. All right, well, let's consider the first resolution.
Resolution approving a project agreement with the Veterans Memorial in Corleville Committee for the city to conduct project management for the fabrication installation of a new sign for the Veterans Memorial, introduced for adoption by council member Quinn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any other questions or comments or discussion?
This is wonderful. And just a side note, what is the quickest way for people to donate to this fund?
You can go to the corlevilleveteransmemorial.org website and print. There's several different kinds of forms. If you want a brick, there's a brick form. If you just want to make a donation, there's a form there as well. And there's different areas that you can, if you're honoring a veteran, they are here in the Freedom Plaza. If you are someone who's able to make a donation of five thousand dollars or more towards this project, they are here in Patriot Circle, they're recognized here in Patriot Circle. And then, those who don't have a veteran but still want to participate are here in Tribute Walkway. So, you can, you will take any amount of money, all the information's there on the Corleville website. And it's, I think, if we got our connections today in the mail, it talks about that as well in the Corleville Connection. And the committee has just, just under eighty thousand dollars to finish not only the granite, but to just finish out a couple of other small projects there with the memorial.
And I think one of the things that is really neat about the individual slabs is that they are, they represent each branch of the military.
They do.
Yeah. This is a project that has been a long time in the works. This actually dates back to Mayor Fawcett, I believe. He had a hand in this.
Yes, something that he was, he was very passionate about, and we're glad to help see his vision through.
Yes, fantastic. Any other questions or comments on this item? Roll call, please.
Council member Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved all ayes with gross absent. All right, on to the next item. This is, this is the part of the agreement that would cover the six medallions. Yep, all right. Don, the resolution, please.
Resolution approving a project agreement with the Veterans Memorial in Corleville Committee for the city to conduct project management for the fabrication and installation of six monuments for the Veterans Memorial, introduced for adoption by council member Dodd, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Quinn. Any final comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Resolution is approved all ayes with gross absent. Item number twelve, updated title six documents. These title six documents need to be updated every five years or whenever there is a change in mayor in order to receive federal financial assistance from the US Department of Transportation through the Federal Highway Administration. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving the submission of an updated standard title VI NOM Discrimination Assurances with the United States Department of Transportation and title of nondiscrimination agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation in order to receive federal financial assistance via the Federal Highway Administration, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Knutson.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved all ayes with gross absent. Item number thirteen, I would consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar, A through S, inclusive.
Moved by Dodd, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Roll call, please.
Council member Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Yes.
Resolution, or I'm sorry, the consent calendar is approved all ayes with gross absent. Item number fourteen, city administrators' report.
The only thing I have, Mayor, is just to remind folks that Winterfest will be at the Corleville, or to the Hyatt Regency Corleville this Sunday from one to four. They've got lots of different activities planned. And the Antique Car Museum of Iowa and Johnson County Historical Museum and the Railroad Group will all have open houses, and that will be free as well. So, this would be a good time to come down and enjoy lots of different activities.
Fantastic, thank you very much. All right, Mayor's Report. Unfortunately, I need to start on a somber note. Mayor Protem Gross is not with us this evening because the West High community suffered a terrible loss over the weekend. One of their students, Charlie Bates, passed away. Charlie is also the son of our Corleville colleague, Nancy Mayfield. Nancy is the marketing and the patron services supervisor at the CCPA. So, I just wanted to share our deepest condolences to the West High community, to the family, and just to let them know that we're thinking of them and sending them lots of love. I also wanted to just acknowledge that this is the first meeting of February. February is Black History Month. There are lots of great events happening around the community. There is a calendar, if you want to take a look at all of the events that are happening locally. There, if you go to Little Village Magazine's website, they have a calendar that outlines all of the great events that are happening throughout Johnson County. And I would just highly encourage everyone to take advantage of those and to check those out. And then finally, the Domestic Violence Intervention Program's Super Bowl is scheduled for February twenty-fourth. Ticket sales will end on Thursday, February tenth. The event will happen at Big Grove in Iowa City. We are continuing to exercise caution because of the pandemic, so we will have drive-through, carryout, and delivery options as well. So, this is just a great event. It's the twenty-fifth anniversary of the DVIP Super Bowl, so I would encourage everyone to check it out. It's a great way to show your support for victim survivors of intimate partner violence, human trafficking, assault, and stalking in our community. We have some soups that have sold out, so I, again, I would just highly encourage everybody to check out our website, dvipiwa.org. On the events page, the ticket link is there. And that is all I have. City attorneys' report.
Just appreciated the weather today.
Yes, I did too, yes.
Kevin?
I did check. It was fifteen thou, up to a fifteen thousand dollar fine to shoot a turkey vulture, so.
You're kidding?
No. So, you have to get a special permit from the Fish and Wildlife Department to do anything with that, so.
Wow, that's, that's a hefty fine. All right. Committee and council members' report. We'll start down at this end with council member Goodrich.
Okay, I have just one quick thing. The Friends of the Corleville Library spread out the books that had been donated throughout the whole basement of the library, and Deb Gale headed that up, and she says, "Many thanks to all our volunteers for helping make this another successful book sale. We made a total of three thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and fifty cents in donations. We have very generous patrons, and we moved out a lot of books." So, thank you. And thank you, Deb, and the whole group, Boy Scouts, where they're helping also, so.
Fantastic, thank you. Council member Dodd.
I have nothing to add this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, council member Quinn.
I, uh... I don't know how to begin. It's been really hard with the loss of, you know, of the student at West. He was a, I know him personally, and my son is a very good friend with Charlie, and that news have hit all of us really, really hard. I personally have been trying to help my son navigate this time, and as a parent, you never, you know, you just, you don't think about these kind of things. And then when you're faced with it, you don't know what to tell your child. You know, it's just, there's just no right words, and it's a devastating loss. And my heart go out to Charlie family, you know, to the people that know him. He was great, he was a great kid, full of life, and his life has just been cut too short. I just wanted to let people who know Charlie know that there is a celebration of life for him this Thursday. A prayer service will start at five, and the, uh, the service will start at six, and it's going to be at St. Thomas More in Corleville. Yeah, I don't know how long it's going to take for the people who know him to be able to move on. But if you, you know, if you know who was affected by it, please take some time, give them a hug. Make sure you hug your children, you love one tight, because you never know, you know, if we have time to spend with them tomorrow. Now, time, life is very fragile sometimes. And sometimes we are all caught up in the hustle and bustle of the daily life. We forget what is the most important, and that is, that is, you know, love for one another. Charlie was, you know, a fixture for, with a group called Young Footlighter, and I know that they, again, Young Footlighter is a fixture at the CCPA. And so, that, that family is struggling right now, just trying to make sense of the event that happened. I also wanted to let people know that the Library Foundation Board is looking for board members. They are short of two board members. The term is three years, and you do have to, you know, go through a vetting process. But I would encourage anyone who, you know, who have the time and wanted to serve our city, please consider putting in your application for the Library Foundation Board. And then, the CCPA is working on having a, sort of like a commission, a commission welcome package, and Evan and his team did a wonderful job, and that will be shared with council and city staff and the general public soon. That's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, council member Knutson.
I really wish Mitch was here so I didn't have to follow that again. Very nice, hi, very sorry. A few things. COVID patients at the hospital, down to fifty-two. I think, I think everybody can agree, it's getting better, and hopefully those trends continue. Got out on the weekend, enjoyed the trails here in Corleville on my bike. It was good to do. Appreciated the services of the parking rec and Sherri of getting those trails cleared for that, and really look forward to more of those rides in the not-too-distant future. After our joint session with the county a few weeks back, I learned a little bit about the Sustainability Working Group of Johnson County, reached out to Amy Foster and met with her a week or two ago, who's our current representative, and she convinced me that, I think she's wrong on this, that I'd be a better representative for Corralville than her, so I'm planning to attend those sessions when able, just meets quarterly on, I think, Wednesdays and be able to report on those activities and maybe try to get some of those folks in to tell us about things we can do in Corralville or ideas that we might be able to do to promote sustainability. So looking forward to that opportunity. And slightly related to that, I, I also saw in the news, I think in the last week or so, that the state of California is basically really promoting composting. They're outlawing food waste into their general garbage and that, of course, is directly tied to sustainability because when you put your food waste in regular garbage, it goes to the landfill. It gets broken down, of course, but it's mostly methane because that's anaerobic breakdown of those products. You need oxygen to break it down properly and that can really reduce the amount of methane produced. And I certainly want to think about that with regards to sustainability. I can personally tell you that we, my wife and I compost at home. We just have a big barrel and been doing that for a number of years. Encourage everybody to do that. I, I, you know, just spread it on our own yard and, you know, it's been my perception anyway that, that the yards, that, you know, the soil, that's the whole idea, that you really enrich the soil and it, of course, absorbs more water and, and can tolerate drought better and certainly that's kind of a win-win, I think. You keep it out of the landfill and if you happen to have a yard and you're able to spread it on that or a garden or whatever it might be, it, it's a great, great way to kind of promote sustainability. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor, may I have?
You sure may.
Thank you. I, I forgot that, to mention that there is a vaccine clinic on February seventeen from four to seven PM at the library, so they will have booster shot, first shot, second shot for COVID-19 vaccine, so please help spread the words.
Is that for all ages?
All ages.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you for sharing that. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Knutson?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.